So then we'll, we'll start. It is May seventh, twenty twenty four. We have a whole meeting at six oh two P M. So I guess we'll just call the meeting to order. And it's the meeting to order and adopt it, adopt agenda circulated. Next, we have a delegation up, which is part of our planning. So if they could come forward.
Evening, Mayor Council and the presentation. I guess if I can hand out briefly a little bit more information. We wanted to share some of the service improvements that we've been working on over the course of last month. Welcome. Can I use the clicker?
Mm hmm. So in terms of an agenda, we're just going to talk a bit about the, the metrics that we saw in twenty twenty three, the challenges that we were dealing with, some of the service improvements that we've implemented in terms of inspections, plan review and communication, what's next? And just touching briefly on our complaint strategy and then time for any questions that you may have. So in terms of permit statistics, I wanted to look at both twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three because they played into some of what we were dealing with. So in twenty twenty two, we did see record numbers of new family dwellings. So there are five hundred and forty one single family dwelling permits issued in twenty twenty two, which was our record year. Following that, in twenty twenty three, we saw record numbers of inspections, which makes sense. The permits were issued in twenty twenty two. Then we saw over eleven thousand inspections that were completed over the course of twenty twenty three, which was a forty percent increase to what we saw in previous years, which were all record breaking. So it was just increase upon increase. You can see in twenty twenty one, we did sixty eight hundred inspections and over eleven thousand inspections in twenty twenty three. So that did result in some challenges. Of course, you have high service levels demands in terms of the plan review than in the inspections. But on top of that, we saw a change to the National Building Code, which came into effect in January of this year. But in the fall of twenty twenty three, we had to review our standard operating procedures and make changes to accommodate that. And then the province introduced the Performance Standard Regulation, which came into effect March of this year, that has legislated timelines to complete certain actions for approving authorities. So we have to confirm initial complete review of building permits within five business days for this year. In March of next year, that needs to be completed within two business days. Timeframes for residential buildings, permit issuance is twenty five days currently. March of next year, that's going to be fifteen days. On the commercial side of things, that's thirty days across the board. But there's also.
I just, so the, but the time stops if there's stuff that needs to be clarified or anything like that, right?
That's correct. That's right. So if we require additional information, let's say one of the drawings didn't have an engineer seal on it, the time stops allowing the applicant because we can't control that. So that's right. Thank you for that point of clarification. And there also are legislated timelines for inspections. Currently, there's six business days and going down to two business days. We have always been able to, I'm gonna knock on wood, been able to turn around our inspections within twenty four hours. But we will, we'll have to monitor how that goes over the course of this year. Do I point it at you, Rainey? Is there anywhere in particular? Oh, there we go. So I mentioned, we did receive concerns. So over the course of twenty twenty three, concerns started to grow. In the beginning of this year, we met with over twenty builders here in West Saint Paul to talk about the issues and concerns. And what we heard was that there was a lack of communication between the building community and our office. Inspectors were not spending enough time with builders. We were commenting on issues that were non-code, code related that created, created some concern. We were providing comments in relation to lot grading. So there are building code requirements that talk about the finished grade to slope away the building. So that had always been part of our final inspection. And we were providing commentary on that, not aware of the detailed process that Stantec goes through. There were concerns that we weren't accepting photographic evidence and that plan reviews were taking too long. So what did we do? We did quite a lot. In terms of inspections, in order to improve communication, we did share our cell phone numbers of the inspection department. The landlines, the desk numbers were always available, but our inspectors are often out in the field. So we wanted to improve that communication piece, and that was something that we heard from the home builders. As practice, providing call aheads if we're running outside of our scheduled A M. Or P M. Time slot. This is consistent with what the city of Winnipeg does, and that's what we heard from the building and development community. They wanted to ensure that there was more consistency with the, the practices that we were doing and the practices of the city of Winnipeg. So inspectors are completing their inspection, commenting only on building code or approved plan compliance. Inspectors will, we will try and provide more time in the field to allow that communication and relationship building. Final inspections were revised in West Saint Paul only to ensure there wasn't that duplication of review and that we weren't looking at the same things that Stantec and the municipality were looking at. We formalized our photographic evidence procedure. So we do accept photographic evidence for minor defects and corrections. Acceptance of non-permanent addressing in West Saint Paul. Again, the builders were a little bit frustrated with this. So that was something that was holding up the completion of final inspections. Access.
So what, what is that exactly? Sorry?
So rather than have the fixed address, they can have the address in the window, let's say with vinyl deckles or something to that effect. Construction keys for building access. There were concerns, sometimes we would arrive on site and the building would be locked. We couldn't access it. There might be charges or fines associated with that. So there are now construction keys for some builders where we can access the property. We are no longer requesting spray foam certification. We will provide code references upon request for any deficiencies. That's not automated as of yet. That's an option, but it requires a lot of resources to build that database. And we also streamlined our inspections. We reduced our hot box inspections from two to one. We provided separate descriptions for inspections for duplexes, improving the communication. Added information to inspection descriptions, again, providing that clarity and improving communication, and adjusted the final inspection to address issues at that time rather than earlier in the inspection process. There's a secret spot and I don't have it here. There we go. But, um, sorry, that's too far ahead. In terms of plan review, we did create a series of standard operating procedures for the acceptance, excuse me, the acceptance of engineered plans. So we do have regular permits and then the certified professional submission applications. Under the CPS program, engineers assume more responsibility for the structural components. Therefore, there's less review by our office. So in those instances, when there's a minor non-structural issue, we will issue the permit with conditions rather than asking for that information. So that speeds up the process. If we're running into consistent issues with respect to CPS applications or if there is a major structural item, we will contact the, the applicant, but we will remove it from the CPS program. We also reduced the number of related markup when we are completing a plan review. Previously, that was to help inspectors in the field, but it was time consuming in terms of the permit issuance. With respect to communication, we created a communication to provide to builders with respect to the booking process as well as the service improvements that we have implemented. Ryan and I, I'm sorry, I haven't introduced Ryan. I assumed everyone knows Ryan, so I apologize. I just realized you were there.
Yeah.
Sorry. Ryan and I have been having ongoing meetings with the building and development community to, again, improve communication and, and move forward. We created a communication procedure with respect to cloud permit. We received complaints that individuals weren't being notified through the cloud permitting, permitting software of requirements. So we do have a separate email that goes out to help improve that communication. And we also created an exception reporting procedure. So that will report to the board any permits that are outside those legislated timelines and the reasons why. And then just some, some general items. We did provide a secure lockbox for after our payments. We are receiving more check payments because the board did implement a two point four percent transaction fee on all credit card charges. So we found we were receiving more check payments. And we also investigated options for non-conforming structures. This was a concern that came from the board that permits and applications were being delayed because of other structures on site. So overall, there are twenty six improvements that have been implemented over the course of April. We continue our commitment to further improvements. We've presented this information to the Manitoba Home Builders Association, and they will be sharing it within their newsletter as well as the newsletter of U D I. We're continuing it with our relationship building, and we are continuing to explore efficiencies through cloud permit and additional software that might assist our plan review process. And lastly, we were successful in receiving Municipal Services Delivery Improvement Program grant. So we do have some work that's coming forward as part of that. We are working with B D O. To create recommendations to improve the financial sustainability of the organization while reinforcing a solid operational baseline. So they will be conducting a risk assessment and prioritizing improvements, look at the permit cycle, review budget and strategic planning, engage stakeholders and explore best, best practices that can be implemented in the R R P D. So we're very happy to have received that funding. And just lastly, I just wanted to touch on our complaint policy. Very often we hear that there are concerns and individuals are afraid to come forward. Please know that, that your rate payers should be bringing forward their concerns and issues. I'm happy to look at them. I do an investigation and look at what the issues are, unpacking some of the, the process that goes along with that, and that helps to inform future improvements. It informs the board because I do report on a monthly basis on that. And it also helps to better understand miscommunications and where we can improve our communication. So that was an awful lot of information in a very short period of time, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there are.
Yeah, I was just saying thank you very much for the report on the service improvements and that you reached out to the building community. I think that's fantastic. Further, any outstanding concerns that still need to be addressed that are, that you're looking at?
We're always looking at approving efficiency. I think processing timelines are always a, a priority. So we're hoping through the Municipal Services Delivery Improvement Program, looking at some of the other software that we've looked at, we want to continue to work towards reducing those timelines. That seems to be the principal issue. Ryan, was there anything?
No, I, I think we're just following up with these items too. The meetings and the discussions, we have builders stopping and now, you know, we've had a few of them just pop in on the phone with them and they decide to come to our office to have a discussion with us.
Okay.
So that's really good. So it's just continuing with those and just, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I think your exception reporting that you're bringing back to the board regarding the plan, is it plan reviews? I think that's excellent. So good job on that.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank, you know, thank you very much for the update and all these changes. I, you know, I, I know yourself, it's stuff that people had, you know, concerns over, over a number of years. So I think it's definitely a real huge step, you know, towards taking stuff easier. Probably, it's, you know, probably a little bit harder at the beginning, but probably easier after stuff's been implemented. You know, even something as simple as the inspector's phone numbers being out there, right? It's, you know, probably cut down on, you know, number of double inspections or missed inspections and that type of stuff, I would think. So, you know, I know I've had, I've called your office on a couple of occasions and it's, 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 well, I'd say it's different. Like you're one, the newer guy, I've, I'll butcher his name, so I'm not even gonna try. He, I talked to him a few times and left a message, called me back right away. And I, I think he's calling from a cell phone or something. And it's been, it's been very, it made stuff easier for sure.
Perfect. Glad to hear that. Thank you.
Counselor Clyburn, anything to you?
The internet popped out when the power comes back on, so it's just been a little more for your comeback.
Well, there's a question while we're waiting. Have you had feedback from the builders?
Yeah, we have. It's been very positive so far. As Brian and I, as we mentioned, we, you know, we've sat down and talked to them. We said, this is a lot of change. We're happy to see it, and so far it has been positive. So we want to see how it runs over the course of the, or the construction season. There might be some tweaks and fine tuning that we need to continue doing, but we're happy to do that.
Yeah, and working towards that Bill thirty eight, as Jennifer mentioned, those timelines that were regulated by, those are gonna be changing next year. So that's our big push is adjusting within our office staff, moving people around for duties just to make sure we're gonna try to meet those timelines now. So that way, when it kicks in, we're ready for it. We're not scrambling trying to figure it out then. So, so that's a big thing is really pushing towards that and making sure we're meeting those timelines. Because once that comes in place, that's regulated by the province. So it's out of our hands as, as staff and as board members and council. We don't get to make the decision on those timelines. So that's really important that we keep pushing towards that. So. But yeah, a lot of good feedback from builders, site supervisors especially. They're really happy. It was, been a tough couple of years with builders. It just all around in the industry, it was hard, a lot of growth and a lot of challenges that they went through too. So, you know, I think we all just kind of went, hit a reset and moving forward and it seems to be working really well.
Yeah. Okay, no, that's good. Thank you.
Do you have any questions, Counselor Clyburn?
Did you have any questions, Counselor Clyburn?
Say that again?
Do you have any questions?
Well, I just got back on again, so I have no idea what you're telling me.
We stopped. Tell her we stopped while we're.
Yeah, with the.
Regarding the service improvements, no, I have no questions about that.
Okay.
That was presented to the board as well, so I'm very aware of what's going on there. No questions here.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody have questions for me of court chair or anything?
No. Well, I keep nodding to the.
No.
T V.
Okay, good. I like that.
So next we're down to environmental and the other economic development, I think. Financial statements, period, period ending January, February twenty nine. If anyone has any, did they have a look at it? Got any questions? You got any questions, Counselor Clyburn? Financial statements, February?
No, I just wondered, why are we in a deficit right now? Are we normally in a deficit, February, March?
Yes, we are. We'll be in a deficit until the tax levy has some added to the books, which is until about end of June, beginning of the month.
Okay.
Unless our revenues, unless our revenues can help over compete our expenses for each of, for each month.
Yeah, I thought that was the case.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, majority of our revenues are taxless.
Yep.
Got any for March? March ending, anybody? How about? I have a couple of questions. And so generally I see that on environmental health care, maybe you can help understand this. It, it looks like there wasn't any payments done to them in, I don't remember. In January, but then there was a part payment in February, and then there was a larger payment in March. So is that, is that typical for that to happen or was there?
Which, which one are we looking at? Environmental health?
Yes.
Yeah, so January, there won't be any payments.
Is that every year like that?
Yeah, so it's the garbage and recycling. We don't receive the billing until the following month. So it's always a month behind, except for your year end statements for December. That includes all twelve months.
Also then, what do you do in December? You pay ahead then? You pay extra?
We do a payment, that's why your statements generally are a little later than your normal monthly statements. We try to capture all the expenses in the final Decembers that we present to council. Those are the ones that we upload to M M O. In March. Those are the ones that were on the last committee of the whole meeting.
Okay.
But yeah, you'll always see, they'll always be one month behind. And it also depends on how quick they are to get us the invoices as well. So the next statements, we have a check coming this Friday, which will include March and April garbage and recycling collection.
Okay. Okay, and then I have some on, a couple on utilities. So I noticed that in utilities, there was basically inventory. We have an increase of two hundred thousand dollars, which I believe that's what's for those pumps that we, the meters that we purchased.
In inventory?
Yes. Is that, is that what, is that what that is or?
On sewer?
Uh, yeah, on sewer.
Uh, that would be the meters that we purchased at the end of the year.
So then also there's something called meter fees. So what are the meter fees then?
Meter fees are revenue. So those are, whenever we input a meter into a new home, there is a meter fee for that. For permitting purpose, at permitting time, the meter fee is collected for all new builds. If it's an existing home, that meter charge is billed at the time of first billing. So that's where we collect that. At year end, we do a reconciliation and we transfer whatever meters we've installed in homes over to the expenses. And then we'll have a, a smaller inventory number. We did have a large purchase just in, I believe it was January for new meters.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why you see that huge increase in, in the inventories there.
So then they, I, I see that they give out, they pick up meters every month, some of them. So how do we track inventory then? How do you know that?
Uh, our public works, our utility clerk tracks every meter that leaves the building. And then at year end, we reconcile, they do a count at year end as well to ensure what they have reported on the report matches to what they have remaining in inventory.
Okay, so you do a reconciliation then?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
That's good. And then I see that there was also, it looks like expenses went down in utilities. I don't know which, which one is down here. Here it was in March. Where's it in? I saw a decrease somewhere.
In the actual financial statements that are presented? I don't think that would be possible.
Well, you take a look at, actually, you know, there was a decrease in the maintenance. So the labor was the same. The maintenance had a decrease of one percent, a negative one, or here it is.
Are you doing a comparison over this year and last year?
Uh, no, I'm doing a comparison for what was spent in February to what was spent in.
Okay, uh, which line item are you looking at?
Trying to get this up here.
Yeah.
Sewer expenses. So you had twenty four thousand in March. And if you count the labor, that was around twenty thousand. So that means you already had four thousand in maintenance.
What's the number on the left hand side? Seven five zero dash one hundred dash what?
Yeah.
Oh, well, the total, I'm, I'm going by the total expense.
So in February for the sewer utility, I have twenty five thousand four hundred and fifteen.
Yeah.
And for March, I have forty two thousand four hundred and sixty three.
Yeah, so now if you take the labor components out, you'll see that there was a decrease in the maintenance portion of it. You don't have to, you can take a look at it later. You don't have to. That's just something I noticed. I guess I'm just wondering why it went down. If you're not able to figure it out now, we can, you can let us know later.
Yeah, that's a good question.
It looks like. There would have been an adjustment to. Sewer insurance. Uh, it was adjusted, it was recorded in the wrong G L.
Oh, it was? Oh, okay.
Yeah. So it was adjusted. It needs to be reallocated.
Okay.
So that's why there would be that decrease there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead. Just once you're done, I just have a couple of.
Yeah, no biomics. I'm done.
Crystal, uh, one, one twenty six, like a seven fifty dash one hundred in sewer charges. What is sewer charges commercial and then sewer charges just residential, I think?
Uh, so we have commercial units. Those would be any of the businesses, like loan capitalists that are connected to sewer. In that case, there is no sewer on capitalists, but we have a few on Main Street. So it'd be any commercial, commercial deemed property, not a residential home. So we just allocate them differently so that we know how much we're receiving for commercial businesses compared to residential.
Like, because there's only four hundred and eleven dollars there.
Yeah.
That's, that's not their bill.
No. No, yeah, that, the.
That's a revenue.
The service charge is the six, I wanna say it's six twenty five or so.
Okay.
Per quarter. So depending on how many properties we have connected, it'll vary.
Okay, that's, I was just curious what that was.
And all cubic meters for all properties are in the cubic meter charges. We don't split those.
Okay. Perfect. And then penalties are people not paying their.
Correct. Anyone who's outstanding past the due date. And it's one point two five percent a month on the outstanding balance.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, any other question? Okay, go down now to four point four three, Access Credit Union Board numbers.
This is just an informational report, basically advising that the Access Credit Union rewards, the more business we do with them, the more rewards we get. And we received sixteen thousand nine hundred thirty two dollars in twenty twenty four. So just an informational report.
Got any questions on it? Okay, so then we'll go down to four point four, twenty, twenty twenty three surplus appropriations to reserves.
So I, I guess there was some question last council meeting about the, the outstanding debt and some of the balances that were outstanding on debt. So on this report, as, as indicated on the April twenty fifth council meeting, there is a, an indicated surplus of just over one point five million dollars that administration is recommending be transferred to the reserves as surplus. There was a question about sort of why aren't we allocating this or could we allocate this towards paying down borrowing? The funds themselves remain in the general operating account and therefore have a interest rate of five point five percent, which is higher than the borrowing rate that we have on any of the, the debt that we could retire. We're in, under, we're, we're reviewing the interest rate of the provincial, or of the reserve cash accounts as well right now with Access Credit Reunion to see if we can get an increase of that one as well and bring it up over towards the five plus percent range as well. The other factor to consider too is if additional borrowing is required at some point in the future. Um, we, if we didn't have these, um, certain, these reserve accounts available to draw upon, we would then have to go for borrowing that we had since retired and borrowing at a higher rate. So, uh, that's the recommendation, I don't know, Crystal, if you wanna add anything to that?
Uh, no, uh, the, the allocations below, um, council can choose to change those numbers, they're not, it was just my recommendation that I put forward based on what we have coming, uh, in future years and this year for capital items.
Any questions? Counselor Cliver?
Just a comment, so along with the higher interest rate, there's also, could be penalties if we paid some of those off, right?
Potentially. We, um, there's possibility of potential penalties, uh, through the province of Antelope, we're waiting for confirmation from them on that, one way or the other, but potentially as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor Campbell. The payment, that's a yearly payment in that schedule?
Yes, that's the annual principal and interest.
Thank you.
Okay, so next on the agenda is four point, four point five, fees and charges, bylaw, schedule amendments.
Okay, so there's, um, um, a select number of fees that we've updated thus far in, uh, April and December of twenty twenty-three and March of twenty-four. This is sort of a more comprehensive update of the fees and charges. Um, uh, as indicated in Schedule A, what we're, what kind of up, there are updates worth looking at. Keep, we wanna keep pace with market and, uh, and maintain service quality. Uh, recommendations as, um, as outlined in Schedule A is what, um, we're looking for council to approve.
Questions? Counselor Cliver, any questions?
Just, oh, sorry. Just, uh, what is the capacity of just our hall at access? Or is it in here?
It's five thirty-five, I believe, um, oh, oh, sorry. I believe it's five thirty-five plus the mezzanine, it's closer to six hundred.
Okay, I'm just trying to compare the same halls to that, just to give you an idea.
So I guess when I was looking at this, you know, I see there's a twelve-hour rate and an eight-hour rate. And if you do the calculations by hourly rate, the twelve-hour rate has a higher hourly rate than the eight-hour. Is there reason for that, or?
Which eight-hour rate?
For the gyms, for the rentals.
Oh, but in, uh, fees and charges?
Yes, fees and charges.
Okay, uh, sorry, but can you repeat, I, now that I'm on the same page as where we're looking?
Yeah, so if we did a calculation on, uh, it's five hundred dollars for twelve-hour rates, it works out to be about forty-one dollars from what I remember, my calculations. And then if you do the eight-hour, uh, for eight hours at three hundred dollars, you need to do that calculation, it works out to be somewhere around thirty-seven dollars an hour, so. I guess I'm just curious why you're paying a higher, a higher hourly rate on twelve hours than on eight hours, I would have thought that maybe there would have been a, a lower rate, but.
Uh, ninety percent of rentals are within the eight-hour time period.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't have many twelve-hour, uh, rentals.
Okay.
Uh, depends on also if you need staff for overtime for a twelve-hour, that you'll have additional staff costs as well, right?
Okay.
But yeah, like I said, a majority of our rentals are, are an eight-hour day.
Okay. Any other question? Okay, next is, uh, four point, four point six. The, uh, Canada Community Building Reserve Fund.
Yeah, this is, um, this is just a, uh, a bylaw, um, to effectively rename, uh, the existing reserve fund from the, uh, gas tax, um, fund to the, um, Canadian Community Building Reserve Fund, which has been renaming of the program by the federal government. There's been some other minor wording changes as well, referring to His Majesty the King as opposed to Her Majesty the Queen, and then some verbiage throughout the, the, um, bylaws as well that refer to federal gas tax funds as, or gas tax funds, uh, being replaced to the Canadian Community Building Fund, so it's really a housekeeping matter in terms of, um, replacing an existing bylaw with a new bylaw and updating it to, uh, current terminology.
Questions? Down to four point four, four point four point seven. The building design.
Yeah, this is, um, this is looking for approval of a, um, or, or I should say, ca- council had approved a capital budget of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars as part of the twenty twenty-four capital plan for the extension of the existing recreational maintenance shop. Um, we issued an RFP and advertised it, uh, on the municipal website in Merx. Uh, the, we, um, closed on April twenty-fifth and three bidders responded, with the low bid being Ridge Mark Builders at, uh, one fifty-four, two ninety-five, so, um, just over five thousand dollars under budget, so we're recommending the award and to proceed with, um, construction using Ridge Mark Builders.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I didn't.
Um, yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, so I just wondering, like, if you're just looking at the prices, looks like, uh, number one is a good price, it's coming in about ninety-seven dollars a square foot, and number two is coming in about two hundred and five dollars a square foot, what, this is a design build, so what's the difference between the first bidder and the second bid builder in terms of the design?
Um, no substantive, uh, design differences, really all meet the specification. Shop's size of twenty-four by seventy by twelve, um, really it comes down to, um, uh, how hungry the contractor was.
But it, but were you specifying, or is it design build?
Oh, uh, it was, it was design build, but effectively both buildings meet the requirements, so. I, I could get some detail on the exact design details if that's what you want, whether there's any substantive dis- dis- details in terms of steel versus.
Right, but what you're, what you're saying is apart from the size, you're building the exact same building?
Uh, not, well, the building itself meets our requirements and is satisfactory, but I can put together a, a summary of the, uh, differences of, of all three bids if that's what you're interested in.
I was just curious as to why there's such a huge difference, it just, it just caught my eye right away, I said, that's a massive difference.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I just started asking questions. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Campbell?
So, yeah, before, you know, before I would vote on this at, at our next meeting, I would like to see the differences because I have heard about issues in the past where we've done a building and, you know, then a year later, they're coming back and asking for electrical to be done inside the building, or this, or that, so I, for me to be comfortable with this, I would like to see, uh, I would like to see it more later. You know, you don't have to do very much work, I just, I can, I'm sure same as Counselor Pact, can anybody else can, can sort of sort through, through it, but I, I don't want it in a year and a half to come back and say, well, you know, we gotta do spray foam, or we gotta do insulation, or.
Right.
Tin on the inside, or any, anything like that, I, I'd like to see that to make sure that, uh, you know, my mind's at ease, that, that they aren't the same, because there's, you know, I, just like Counselor Cliver knows, uh, the building industry, there's, there's something that doesn't add up with the one that's a hundred percent higher, and then there's one that's over two hundred percent higher, right, so there's, there's something that doesn't make sense.
Sure, we can put together a, um, a comparison matrix of the different bids, and, uh, and also within that matrix, we'll provide some context in terms of how material any differences are.
Yeah.
For, for the purposes of the building.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind seeing the, uh, the tender, you know, tender, or what, what was asked for versus what were, what was proposed, right, by each.
Sure.
So, yeah, thank you.
Counselor Cliver? You had your hand up?
I think, uh, Counselor Campbell covered it. I just wanna, if it's just, uh, putting up four walls, that's one thing, um, but I assume it's more than just putting up four walls. Uh, is it, is it prefabed, Dave, or?
Uh, I don't believe so, no.
You don't think so?
I don't, I don't believe so, but I'll pull together the details on the construction.
Yeah, I think we need to look up that because otherwise we could end up shooting doors and it'll cost us a lot more than we need, so.
Right.
Okay, thank you, I think that Counselor Campbell covered it.
Okay, number four point five, personnel and policy, four point five one, request for service April first to thirtieth.
Okay, so, um, this is a, um, uh, summary of the RFS reports, or, or it, um, reports that had come in for April two, first, April thirtieth, um, approximately forty-eight had opened, and, uh, forty were closed, the most common being, um, drainage, um, drainage complaints themselves, and there was an average, uh, time to close of, uh, approximately three days. So, uh, there's summary of, uh, the locations and the, the type of, um, um, reports that came in as well on the, uh, the following page.
Any questions?
Just, I, I know we've talked about it before, it shows, uh, open zero and closed two, right, just picking administration, let's say, or water and wastewater. So those were previously open?
Yes, they were, they're, they're from, um, uh, past reports.
Okay.
So they would have been carryover from the, um, the April first, uh, threshold of the report.
I thought so, and I knew we had talked about it, I just wanted to confirm.
Counselor Cliver?
Andy, what have, what have we been doing with the baked items, have you, um, tracked it and sourced for those yet, or what are we doing with that?
Uh, we, uh, we issued an RFP, we had, um, two responses that, um, uh, we are, uh, reviewing with. It was not, um, as robust a response as we had hoped with, and so, um, we're, uh, following up on some alternatives right now.
Okay, and you'll be getting back to council on that, right, too?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good, just for the summer months, this is when we wanna start going in there and cleaning some of this stuff up?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So on, on here, they got the average number of days to close, so it's a hundred and twenty-two, I guess that's frozen, there's, there's.
Yeah, that, that's still, uh, um, an issue we're trying to clean up on these reports where, uh, there's, uh, some longstanding reports. It, on the, um, January first, April thirtieth report, you'll see that we've made good progress on cleaning up, uh, the backlog, and, uh, closing of stale complaints since the new year, we've, um, where we've closed off, um, sixty-two, um, and, uh, brought down sort of the over number, overall number of outstanding complaints. So, uh, hopefully we'll see that number drop off going forward as some of these sort of stale-dated reports and reports that we, we couldn't address over the winter months, uh, get cleaned up.
Okay, so if anyone got any questions on April, uh, from, uh, from January to April, or? No? Okay, so that takes that, that takes five point two, so now we are on four point five. Uh, going down to, there's nothing in four point six, four point seven, point one, uh, volunteer youth award. I, uh, let's see where we are. Okay, please, do you wanna? Go ahead, speak on that, please?
Sure, yeah, the, uh, the West St. Paul Youth Volunteer Award is awarded to residents under the age of eighteen, but made a contribution to their school, an organization, or the community as a whole. Two nominations were received this year, and, uh, it's recommended that the award be given to Emerson Violet, uh, or Violet, pardon me. Um, she is, uh, volunteered at the West St. Paul Nursery School, the West St. Paul, uh, Summer Camp, Keystone Kips, which is West St. Paul Gymnastics Club on competition days. Volunteer efforts, she's played with Seven Oaks School Division, the Kev Pavilion at, uh, Folk Rama. Also an active member on many committees, grad committee, Women and Girls Empowerment Group. She's also school student council president, volunteering tutoring fellow students in pre-calculus and sciences, planning fundraisers and school events at Garden City Collegiate, and, uh, also, um, manages and assists coaching on a boys' youth basketball team. In addition to this, Emerson volunteers with the seniors, uh, in, um, in the community, and participates in programs that involve newcomers that have, uh, escaped the war in Ukraine. Uh, so in addition to being a hard worker at school, she gives back substantially to the community, and that's the recommendation.
Any questions? Oh, Counselor Campbell, go ahead.
I, I, I do have a question, is there anything saying or, uh, that we couldn't, that we can't do two awards?
Um, not. I, I think, I think there's a, a budgeted amount, but I don't think there's any reason we couldn't, is there?
The only reason I say that is, uh, you know, I, I think it's good when any youth is, uh, volunteering, and I would, uh, you know, it'd be a shame to deter, um, someone, uh, you know, when they're doing good. You know, you and I both know how it is if someone, uh, you know, thinks that they're worthy of something, or, you know, if someone else thinks they're worthy of something, and they, uh, they don't get recognized, well, maybe they're not going to continue down that same path, and I know people don't do the, uh, volunteering for acknowledgement, but it's also something nice, especially when you are, you know, a youth. So that's, that's my only question, or, you know, maybe, you know, we, we have a discussion about that on Thursday as well, and,
Mm-hmm.
and just see, I see Counselor Cliver has her hand up, so I just, I was just thinking of that, like you said, so I'm curious to hear what Counselor Cliver has to say as well.
Counselor Cliver?
Well, I think we can only give out one award, but I mean, uh, whoever we give it to, the other person can apply next year. Uh, I have a question for the D A L, and I, I don't know if you have an answer, but West St. Paul, uh, camp, youth camp, is that not a paid-for position?
Um, there's both volunteers and, uh, and counselors, it's volunteers, volunteer, and, and some, some youth counselors.
So there's some volunteers that put in two hundred and forty-five hours worth of volunteer work and don't get paid?
Crystal, you're speaking.
Uh, yeah, so we have a volunteer option for students that are underage and are not able to be paid for the work. Um, so they generally will volunteer until the age of fifteen, uh, with our summer camp and help out as needed uh, throughout the, the eight weeks of, uh, camp programming. So it's geared to more of the younger, younger kids before they are able to enter into the workforce.
So, um, the second applicant, how old are they?
Seventeen, oh, no, pardon me, um. I'm not sure if we have that on hand, but to your point of whether they can apply again next year, um, they have to be, um, under the age of eighteen.
Right, well, we have Emerson who's been volunteering since she's twelve, and she's in her last year of high school, so that gives me an understanding of where she's at. But the second one, Angelica, there's no information, uh, there at all, so I think we need a little bit more information there. And she said that, um, her main boss is Demara, and she's worked with some counselors. Uh, I'd just like some clarification if, uh, this was a paid counselor? Or it was volunteer for sure, and what their age is?
Um, Angelica had volunteered for approximately two hundred and forty-five hours at, uh, at the camp.
Right, well, it depends, forty hours a week. That's pretty quick, two forty-five, so that's why, just like a little bit more background information, age, current age, right, like, are they in high school, are they in junior high, what, what's going on there? And, um, this is the only one, the only volunteering that's been done on this one is at, at camp, West St. Paul camp, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Uh, my, my vote would go with Emerson because she has done a variety of volunteering, I understand. I understand Counselor Campbell's point, but if you could check the age, that would help us, I think. If she can't apply again next year, then, you know, we can discuss that.
Okay, we'll see if we can find that out.
Yeah.
Any other questions? So the next one, four point seven two, it was a request if we could do this one in camera. More or less to get more understanding and get more into the details of it. Is that all right with council?
I'm good with that, yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so move that into camera, and then we go down to four point eight, there's nothing in four point eight, transportation. Five external committees, there's nothing. Six, any new business, none. Six point one is newsletter. It is coming out, and I guess I'll let Ms. Shaw speak to it.
Well, we're hard at work in the next newsletter. I know everyone just got the April issue a few weeks ago. Welcome any ideas, suggestions, if you know of anything noteworthy happening in the community or any interesting events or competitions or anything that you think would be beneficial to share, let us know. I'm happy to have any feedback on what we have been putting.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Michelle, I'm just wondering if you can contact the R C M P because they said they were going to be putting, try to put, you know, a little bit more in there. There's been, there's a lot of issues happening, like reading the Selkirk Record and stuff. There's been stuff right across the capital region. So it'd be good for them to put a good, we're getting into summer. The trouble seems to pick up a little more in the summer, so a little bit more awareness through the R C M P on any tips that they could, you know, maybe put a half-page in there, something that's going to really...
Certainly. I do already have a submission from the West St. Paul COP group, and we'll reach out to the R C M P as well.
Maybe a safety section from our COP group and the R C M P, you know, something that we can put out there, so.
I just, sorry.
Can I say something?
Go, go ahead, Counselor Kleiber.
I just wanted to compliment our staff. I received a lot of very good compliments, both the newsletter and people are saying that it's much more community oriented. And they're very pleased with the content, so just kudos to you guys.
Thank you.
So I know that this topic has come up before, I just want to refresh my memory here. So there's been concerns and before that, not every resident is getting the newsletter, and I know that. So have we checked that whatever postal codes that we have is what goes out on the newsletter?
Yes.
You have?
Yes, we have, and we adjusted this last run, so welcoming feedback for those that haven't been getting in those problem areas. We reached out to a few residents who we know haven't been getting newsletters, and they did get the April issue. So we're hoping that that's corrected most, if not all, of the problem. But we have adjusted the route, so again, welcome feedback on that if anyone suddenly didn't get the newsletter or is now getting the newsletter.
Yep, thank you very much. Okay, seven, question period. Any questions? Anyone have any questions? Go ahead, come on up. Ron, if you don't.
Ron Lewis, fifteen seventy-seven Miller Road. It doesn't pertain to anything that was on the agenda tonight, but it has to do with the antenna protocol that's coming up on Thursday, and there won't be a question period, so I just want to ask two questions that possibly I can get answered on Thursday. Basically, I'm all in favor of a protocol, a bylaw, obviously, as the council is. But I just want to give you some background, and then I'll end it with my two questions at the end. When I first got involved with this, a year ago, I reached out to Innovation Science Economic Development Canada, and I was put in contact with a spokesperson, like community or residential spokesperson, and they explained it pretty black and white to me. Yes, it's perceived that the federal government, that department decides a hundred percent where a tower goes. But the way it was explained to me is the municipality that the towers go in are the mainstay. They have the biggest input. That agency, that innovation, basically hands over the keys at the end. When it meets the criteria, the municipality likes it, NAV Canada, it meets all their requirements. It checks all the boxes, they say, okay, we approve it. And they, they basically turn the power on, once it's built, it gets the building permits, it's approved, they hand over the keys. So that's where the overall approval comes from, but it only, it's common sense. But where towers go, where R M's and the public and just want them to go. They want to hide it as much as possible because they don't want any, the more people involved, the longer it's going to take. So they want to just get this passed easily, put in land that doesn't affect anybody and put it up. It's like Counselor Campbell says, they just sprout up every once in a while, and nobody knows anything. But right off the hop, I, after I talked to them, it made a hundred percent, a hundred percent sense that, yeah, it's, the municipality has a lot to do with it. I started reviewing my proposal that I received from Rogers, and yeah, it goes on, it does say that department is the overall approval of these towers and this and that. But it stresses how much the municipality is crucial to the decision that they make in this proposal. And another thing they mentioned is Red River Planning, Red River Planning has been notified and as well as R M of West St. Paul, knew everything about towers that go up in the R M of West St. Paul. And they, how they're relaying it is, it was all, it's all been approved by the planning board or the planning of R M of West St. Paul. So to answer some of your, some of your questions, I've heard numerous times, is you guys, or the council says, we want to know, we want to know when these towers are going up. Well, the planning department knows every tower that goes up in the area, as well as Red River Planning. So it is, it is known, maybe it's just a lack of communication going out. That's going to improve, obviously, with the, with the protocol being put in place and that type of thing. But like C A O Wardrop talked about the last meeting when it was read the first time, yes, the ultimate decision is made up, and, you know, it's sort of downplaying, the municipality doesn't have, doesn't have a real say in it and everything. I guess my two questions, and I'll end it with this, is why, why, they mention it in three separate paragraphs in this proposal for a cell tower from Evolve or Rogers. Why do they keep asking for a letter of concurrence from the R M? Why is that so important? And as well, they talked about, like I said, the letter of concurrence and why, why, I'm, sorry, I lost my train of thought, but why do they ask for a letter of concurrence, but as well, sorry, I'm just looking for it here. The importance of not having, the R M of West St. Paul, to quote it, does not have a tower sitting protocol. So that's why we're going, we're going forward with this. So I'm just saying, Counselor Pacquiao asked that the last meeting as well, like, is this important? Well, I think it really is important because they mentioned it numerous times. So it's a good thing, obviously, going forward. But I, I don't, I think it's, it's way more prevalent or way more relevant than, than it appears to be. Because that's, that's what they try to perceive, that it's all done by people five thousand kilometers away, and they decide where these towers go. No, not at all. They're the ones who just say, they make sure the boxes are all checked, and they rubber stamp it, and they give the keys.
Go ahead, Counselor Campbell.
Yeah, thank you very much for bringing that, your concerns and your thoughts and your comments to the table. It's greatly appreciated, this council shares all of your thoughts and sentiments. And yeah, the fact of the matter is, the federal government or this, the federal department, whatever it's called, communications, yeah, they do have the ultimate say. But this protocol, after, I've read it a couple of times, and it's actually pretty good. It does say that this protocol will require new applications to come forward to the municipality and to touch base with the municipal legislative officer. And there's only a few instances where it doesn't have to come forward, and that's if the tower is like less than fifty, fifty meters or less, or if they're maintaining it, or if it's going on top of a building, then they don't have to come. Or existing, exactly. But if there's anything new, it says that, you know, it, you need to maximize the distance away from residential areas, away from commercial properties and all this other stuff. So it's pretty detailed in that respect. There is a flow chart in the setting protocol as well that talks about concurrence and non-concurrence that you brought up. At the end of the day, the applicant or the federal government does need to have some letter from us, whether it's concurrence or non-concurrence, they need to have one of the two of them, right? So, yeah, I mean, they might probably be pushing for concurrence, but we have the ultimate say in terms of concurrence or non-concurrence. So there is a new avenue, and this protocol, I'd say, just from my read of it, is pretty good. So I think it, I think it will help. And they do stress co-locating, so that means they, they don't want to see any new towers come up. They just want you to, they want to put another antenna on top of another tower, and that's what they encourage.
Shared, yeah.
Shared use, yeah.
I think the other thing that I liked out of it too is that there is a deadline for them to build it. If they don't build it within, if I remember right, if they don't build it within two years, they have to give the municipality ninety days' notice before construction starts, and they have to have it, if I'm right, completed within three years. So it means that it's not going to be something that's going to pop up in five years anymore. There is a deadline to this building a tower. So I think that was another important step that I learned from it, which I thought was very positive. Anyone else?
And just to, just to end off by, by your second question, why is your, like, how the innovation group said if there's no tower sitting protocol, they can just do whatever they want, that's kind of true, like. But now that we have this, it puts another layer of protection for the R M and for the residents.
Like, I don't know which counselor said it, but it was six months ago or something. It's like they're poking, like, ah, you don't have a protocol, so we can do whatever we want. That's what comes across. But like I said, when I spoke to that spokesperson, they, it holds a lot more weight. The R M holds a lot more weight than you really, as we all know.
No, you're right, and I appreciate again your advocacy, because if you weren't, if you and your wife, for instance, weren't as, which is great, which is great.
If the tower was moved a few, hundred meters the other way, only the, only the person, well, the twelve oh one Miller Road, they're the only ones involved in it. The R M wouldn't, other than the planning department and no other resident. It's just so happened that I haven't been in the radius of the, to be notified. So that's what ideally they want, that's what they want, right? They don't want, they want to put it so that people don't know about it, and the less people that know about it, the better. Faster we can get it up, and we can all say, where'd that come from, right?
While you're still here, I can ask the C A O this question. It does say in the protocol, something like that the, that the distance from, from the tower to a resident has to be like a minimum of three times the height. Is that something that the municipality can control? Because it can, it's, it does say minimum, but it could go more.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay, so.
That's something you could put in the protocol. Because it's three times your rate, so if it's two hundred meters, any resident within a six hundred meter.
Yeah, we can control those things.
Three hundred.
We have the ability to control it.
Yeah, awesome. Yeah, we learn stuff.
Well, the ability to provide that in your letter of concurrence or non-concurrence.
Yeah.
Right.
So it gives us a say, a stronger say than we had before.
Nice.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I can ask a question? Oh, no, once we're, once we're done.
I guess so.
I have a question.
Norma Albert, three twelve Lynn Avenue. Just further to Mr. Lewis, kudos to all of you as well. When, when the first reading came forward, my quick research showed that, that the draft was using F C M's template, which I believe they established in 2014, so it means for ten years it's been determined to be enough of a problem across the country that municipalities could perhaps use this template, but West St. Paul hadn't done that. So kudos to you folks for listening to the resident and bringing this forward and bringing it to fruition. My question tonight, in reviewing the C A O's report and the M L O's report, I see that there is potentially a public hearing scheduled for three L I Ds for May the thirtieth. Two of those actually say May the third, I'm suspecting that's a typo and probably not something you want to typo on, since there's no word out in the community at all about the L I Ds, so where's all of that at? The L I Ds for the three?
Publishers.
Well, this is the fir, I read the fifteen-page report, and most people would not read that, we've not heard anything. There's, my, my ear is somewhat to the ground, and we haven't heard any.
Mary, this is not on the agenda?
There's nothing. So I found, I see it in the report, and so I'm wondering, when is the community going to know so at least they can save the date or something?
Okay, I'll let the C A O speak to that.
Public notifications will be distributed tomorrow.
Okay, and so is that a typo, or are all three public hearings happening on the same day and on May the thirtieth?
Yes.
Okay. And is there any process between us receiving documents and the public hearing that can be useful? Should we be talking with administration or asking questions of our counselor or nurse?
All, all information around the process and the public hearing will be in the information distributed tomorrow.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Tomorrow evening, for clarification, not tomorrow, tomorrow evening.
Thank you.
Can I just ask the C A O a question on that, on that? So is that being mailed out or hand-delivered to doors, just so it's?
They will be hand-delivered to individual houses where the resident is not there to receive it. A photograph of the letter will be taken, be left at the door.
And it will be put in the record, I guess.
We're recording, we're recording every delivery. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, come on up, please.
Jerry Belinky, three five four Garden View Drive. It's sort of a concern and information was the question after. It's about Ames Road. And I brought up what I thought was the wrong limestone being put on the road. And I noticed that the different loads, the last few loads were of a higher quality of limestone. It was more weight. So what I feel, and the road is being maintained. It gets beat up, and they're out there, I don't know, sometimes twice a week. So it's, they're having a problem because of the weight of the trucks. The road was never designed, it was the older part of Ames Road, was never designed for that weight. And my question is, why doesn't the municipality use traffic gravel instead of limestone on the road? The traffic gravel is aggregate, and it wouldn't, and I think what's happening is with the limestone, the heavy weight is just pulverizing it. And if you go and look now after the range, it's all sitting in the ditches as a, as a wash. So what's happened, I think, like, the provincial roads are used traffic gravel. And I don't know if it's not used because of the expense or whatever, but the traffic gravel is harder. So it won't, it's usually granite or crushed granite, so it won't, it won't pulverize like the limestone does. So I don't know if, if it's the cost for loads or what it is or the design of the roads doesn't use it. But I know the province uses it, if you look at on the side of the curbs, it's all traffic gravel, so it's not limestone. So that's the question. Problem I'm having with this, with myself and with customers, is when they travel down the road, and if the cars are parked close together, when you walk by, you get that all over the clothing, then I get complaints. So I'm just looking for a solution. So I'm just looking for a solution. You can only do what you can do, right? I mean, that's, that's what it is, but I'm just wondering if anybody investigated using traffic gravel.
Go ahead, Josh.
I can, I can, I can speak to Public Works and ask them if they've reviewed different materials, and, and what they use, and what.
Because I have traffic gravel in my parking lot on Main Street, and I never had the issue that, that this road, but I never had the weights. I did have semis coming in, or trucks coming in loaded, but, uh, we have a lot of heavy traffic on that road. So, uh, if you look in the ditches, you can see where it's washed, or even if you look at, uh, the paved portion of Ames Road, it's all white, so it's been, you know, it's, it's been crushed, and it's like paint, it's moving along, so, uh, it's not good for anybody. I mean, if you keep putting it on, and it's running into the ditch, you're just repeat, repeating and repeating. So that's why I think, uh, the traffic with the gravel would be a better solution.
Okay.
All right?
Go ahead, uh...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, I have a question for the CAO, it's sort of on the same lines as, uh, Mr. Blenke, just in terms of the standards, and you don't have to answer today, if you can just get to it, to, for a future meeting, in terms of what, what standards does the RM follow in terms of gravel road maintenance? Um, and is it provincial standard? What, what standard is it? Also, in terms of the grading schedule, how many times are gravel roads graded? I recently had several, I got contacted several times from different residents on Miller Road, and, um, basically, there's, uh, people are slipping and sliding, because it seems to me upon inspection, uh, that there's little, the gravel's probably wearing away, or when it gets graded, it's moved to the side, and there's big chunks of clay that are at the side, so it's, it's kind of showing that there isn't much gravel left, or if it is, it's being pushed into the, into the gumbo. So, you know, is, is it getting topped up regularly, and is there, um, sort of a, a crossfall crown for proper drainage, that kind of thing? So, just the standards, I'd like to get a better understanding of that for, for the gravel road systems in the RM. Thank you.
Okay, I'll see what I can pull together for you.
Okay. Okay, so I guess that takes us down to number eight, we're going to go into camera.
Good night.
Yep.
Good night.
Good night. So I guess now, uh, the meeting is, we've completed our discussion in camera, and we're now going to adjourn the meeting, the committee of the whole, at seven fifty PM. Thank you very much.